All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. The Planning Commission Work Studies Session and Public Hearing of October 10th, 2014 is now called to order. Time now is four thirteen PM, and we are now on the record. Correct? Everything's good to go? Very good. Introduction. Would everybody please stand for the salute of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with introductions for the commission and the staff. Please state your name for the record. Let's start with Peter Smith. Peter Smith. Ross McDowell.
Scott Stevens.
Jill Nielsen.
Thank you.
Rob Wade.
Thank you. Agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? This one right here.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Very good. And do I have a second?
Yes.
And we have a second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not hearing any? Motion passes. Three pass. Minutes. This is really simple. There are no minutes. We didn't have any minutes, right?
Yeah. We don't.
We don't have any minutes.
Not today.
Not today. So that one makes that one really easy. Okay. Now it's time for the public comment. If you're here and would like to address the Planning Commission on any topic other than what's on the agenda tonight, please do so at this time. Comments are limited to two minutes per person. Please state your name and your address for the record and speak in the microphone as this meeting is being recorded. Microphone is right up there.
I just have a question about this. Is this part of the public hearing? Is this a public hearing comment section or is this just?
No, this is the public meeting.
Okay.
You'd have an opportunity for public comments and not on the public hearings.
Not on the topics.
Anything else.
Anything else but what's on the agenda.
So we'll have two public comment period. Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
Seeing there's none, we'll go ahead and go on to the work studies section and the public hearing itself. Ordinance 2014-19, the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Code Amendments Procedure Update. Would our planning director please provide us with an overview before we go on to the public hearing? Mr. Walter.
You probably want me over here, huh?
That would be good.
Did you read this? I don't understand it at all.
All right, so what we have before you this afternoon, like you said, is the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation process update. So I'll give you the, I'm going to assume you've read my, the staff report and looked over the ordinance a bit, so I'll give you kind of the reader's digest version here. So I don't like to read agendas to you into the microphone because it's not real exciting. So the nutshell version here, we, the State of Washington through the Growth Management Act requires us to maintain and update our comprehensive plan and our development codes. You guys are the group that provides recommendations for changes and approval or denial of changes that are submitted to the city, to the council for their final approval and adoption. So you're one part of that process. So before I bring an ordinance to you guys for your review, it goes through a few other steps, and that's what this ordinance is going to describe. We've got a public notice, we've got environmental review, the CIPA, the State and Environmental Policy Act, we've got the Department of Commerce, that's basically the state's planning department, more or less, double checks to make sure we're not doing something stupid. And then when we get the nod from them, we move forward with a work study session. Sometimes we'll have multiple work study sessions. Sometimes like tonight, it's simple enough that we think we can get it done in a work study session, public hearing, combined meeting. And then from them, we're, you'd be on to making a recommendation to council of the ordinance as presented and go on to council for approval and adoption. And then we give one more notice to the state to let them know, we send them our final copy. It has to be sent within a certain number of days so that if they don't like it, they could technically tell us it's not valid or file an appeal or something like that. I haven't seen that ever happen, so. The other part of what's on, within this ordinance is the Exhibit A, which is the Public Participation Plan, which is also required by the DMA Growth Management Act. It describes how we involve or encourage the public involvement in the process that we're doing, so we, you know, open government and all that. So basically, it's going to tell that we provide notice in the newspaper, we publish a notice of the meeting on the city's website, we ask for folks to show up and provide their comments and ideas. Pretty much describes the whole process, how we get information out to the public so that we can get them involved. So there you go. That's the nutshell version of what we've got. There's a fairly long ordinance with lots of details about exactly how that happens. If you have questions about specifics, I can answer those.
Well, I just.
It's like reading Greek.
Reading Greek. I just, I've read it twice too, and it's more Greek.
Was there a particular section you have a question about?
No. No. It's well-written, I mean, but I just, I don't understand what, I don't understand it.
Well, I understand it might take some time to do this, but do you want to touch on kind of some of the more important parts of the process that's in here?
Sure, we can do that.
I understand your situation, Scott, because when you, when you're first introduced to this, if you don't understand what the whole process is to begin with, then it's like, I don't even know what all these things mean. So I think that's kind of where we're at.
I did read it, though.
Is that we're so new to some of this that maybe, I mean, I don't know how much detail you want to go into, but maybe there's a way we can kind of just quickly walk through and say, okay, this is like the process that's being presented.
Sure. So just as a quick backup, just a hair, at the last meeting that we had, I described to you guys this real basically, you know, how we fit, where the Planning Commission fits in the whole hierarchy from the state on down to getting things into the code. And so the two that are most important to us out of that is the comprehensive plan and the development codes. That's what we're talking about tonight. So your comprehensive plan, if you remember, is your 20-year vision for what do we want to be as a city. So that comprehensive plan is an official document that is approved only by recommendation from you guys to council. So council makes the decision as to whether or not they're going to take your recommendations on changes. And that could involve anything from moving the zoning around, increasing density, changing maximum heights and setbacks, all kinds of different performance standards or, you know, things that would affect the built environment out there. So your comprehensive plan, any change to that, we have a process for how those changes happen. That's described in here. The other is your development codes. So your zoning code, for example, where you actually get to the part where your front setback is, you know, what, 20 feet or whatever it is. And that's in your development code. So it's your zoning code. Has to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. So that's how those two documents work. So the comprehensive plan is your general plan, your development codes are the specific, they're the law, they're the details of when you want to apply for building permit application to build a building, you have to comply with the standards in the development code. So when we want to make changes to either the development code or the comprehensive plan, this is going to give us the process.
That's what it's all about.
That's what it's about.
Okay. It's nice to know what it's all about.
There you go.
There you go. Solid light bulb, go on. That's what I was looking for. I'll give you the big picture first.
Now I get it. Yeah.
So.
Reading all your words, I don't know what pertains to.
Yeah. So with that in mind, again, let me, before we start going point by point through the ordinance here, because I'm hoping that we don't have to do that because it could take a long time, I'm going to give you the general overview again real quick. So when we update either one, the development code or the comprehensive plan, we have to provide notice to the public.
Okay.
We have to, two weeks ahead of time, before we had this meeting, we had to publish a notice in the newspaper.
Right.
We had to put a copy of the agenda on the bulletin board here at City Hall, and we also had to put a notice on the city's website that said, we're having this meeting and this is what it's about.
Okay.
Next thing, this one is actually, because it's procedural only, we didn't have to do CIPA, the environmental review, because there's no impact to the environment on how we process ordinances. It's all paper.
Right.
So I guess we use a lot of paper. Maybe there's an environmental impact there.
Well, the boundaries.
It's all electronic.
You know, the boundaries are set forth right now, they're all right, aren't they?
The, like zoning district boundaries and stuff? Yeah, yeah, we aren't making any changes to that through this. This is just if we were going to make changes to zoning, we would have to follow this procedure that we're describing tonight.
All right.
Maybe, I'm sorry to interrupt, maybe kind of what's preempted this, no, that's not the right word, what got us going on this process is that we, because the marijuana topic has been allowed now, the cities are required to make some kind of zoning plan.
Zoning requirement, yeah.
Right. And as we started that process, Rob and our attorney looked at what plan, what process we had in place, and it was very minimal. And the attorney felt that it would be wise to have a better process in place.
So this is a process.
Before we start making any changes.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's kind of where this got started.
It's coming together.
Yeah, yeah. So we thought, well, we better do this step first, and then once we get an appropriate process down that's, you know, pretty much rock solid, then we can go on to the next step.
I got you now.
Yeah, so the Growth Management Act has the basic framework for process. It says we have to do public notice, we have to do CIPA.
I'll read it again.
The city attorney strongly felt that we needed to have more detail in our process. So it's consistent with, but more detailed than what's in the Growth Management Act. So with that, I'll continue through here, just, so again, when we're doing a change to a zoning code, for example, and it might make an impact on the environment, maybe we're going to allow, just as a hypothetical, don't get too excited, you allow 100 feet of height and density at 50 units per acre, you would create a huge traffic impact, you might have environmental impacts of light, you know, the shadows would be cast on properties for several hundred feet in directions. You could have additional sewer water, stormwater impacts. So all those things would need to be looked at, and that gets reviewed under CIPA. So CIPA is the State Environmental Policy Act, requires us, anytime we make a change to our code or a development application comes in to build like a commercial structure, it would need to be reviewed first for compliance with CIPA. So what are the environmental impacts? And if they're significant, then we describe what kinds of mitigation would be required to offset those impacts. An example would be, commercial building generates enough trips between 4:30 and 5:30 in the afternoon that it's going to make an intersection too busy. And so we say, the four-way stop's not going to cut it, you have to put a turn lane in now. So the CIPA mitigation would be developer has to build a turn lane, so they have to widen the road. So that's what CIPA is for. It allows you to catch impacts, adverse impacts that a development might make on your community that you don't necessarily have the code in place to address. So it's the unexpected stuff. It's kind of the safety net for land use. So that happens before we do a change to our code or before a commercial development occurs in hand. So same process rescues both situations. So CIPA happens, that's in, that's in our ordinance tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one, one part of it.
I did have one question about, it talks about amendments to a proposed plan.
Yeah.
A development plan. I was wondering if the, if CIPA is required for amendments to a proposed plan, do they have to go through the CIPA requirements or do they, is that not necessary for, for an existing business or?
It depends on what the amendment is. If the amendment is minor, and so say, so CIPA is a real general process, so it's mainly text. So I don't, when I review a CIPA, an environmental checklist, it's about 10 pages of questions about what, what is your project going to impact in the environment? And if the original CIPA application for, say, as, I'll give another example, we had a three-story commercial project, and it was going to have 20 units of residence above. And the developer gets ready to submit permits and decides, oh, I changed my mind, I'm going to do 30 units instead. And so, well, that is going to have, so you're adding 10 units. So we've got to go back to CIPA, and we're going to amend your CIPA application. So CIPA is kind of conceptual, and the development approval would be very specific. So this is, you know, building permit. You know, we've got structural drawings and a site plan, and we know exactly what you're going to build. So if you change your mind and it's more than what you asked for under CIPA, then we're going to have to go back and amend CIPA.
Okay. I wasn't sure where that was at, if there was anything about that in, you know, talk about amendments.
That wouldn't really be addressed in here, because this is just a procedure for updating our code. So that would be covered in our development code in further down in more detail.
Excellent.
So this is.
So this doesn't cover the development code?
No, this wouldn't be the proper place for that. This is just the process that we go through to amend our development code. But within the development code, there's already a description of what's required to do a physical project out in the real world.
That works for me.
So then, moving on from CIPA, another step that's required before an amendment to either the comprehensive plan or the development code would come to you guys, is that we have to give notice to the state. So Department of Commerce, provide a copy of the draft ordinance. So this ordinance that you see tonight, I already sent that to the Department of Commerce a few weeks ago, and they have it for typically 60 days is the required amount of time. We can request expedited review on anything that we feel is fairly simple and they should be able to get done in a shorter amount of time. So I did request expedited review on this because it's simply procedural, and they granted that approval on Monday morning. But what they do, like I said, they kind of function like the planning department for the states. So they receive that ordinance and they send a copy to every other state agency, and then they look for comments from those state agencies. And if they get something significant back, then they send us a letter, which we'll receive within 14 days of this last Monday, we'll get a letter, it'll probably say, thank you for the opportunity to comment, we have no comments.
Bureaucracy.
But sometimes it might say, you know, the Department of Ecology had an issue with what you want to do, or Department of Natural Resources says that's going to impact some land that they own in or near your city.
Everybody gets involved.
Everybody gets involved. Well, that's part of the open government, you know, when you're changing the law and it needs to be done.
Wow.
So again, so that's in here. Tonight it says that we're going to do the proper notice to the Department of Commerce. And then, once we get those things taken care of, because I wouldn't want to bring an ordinance to you guys before we finished CIPA and we sent it to the state for their review. So once we know that, you know, those guys are taken care of, then we bring it to you and say, all right, we've got this draft ordinance, we're going to move it on through, have your work study session, like what we're doing right now, question and answers, put me on the spot, grill me on it, you know, if you've got something that you don't like, you know, let me know. Or if you want to make changes, this is the time. And then after we, really you guys, come to an agreement that this is the code that you think we should present.
And it goes back through the.
Well, then we open it up for public hearing. So you say, okay, we've made our, we've got our draft ordinance, Planning Commission looked at it, they like it, now the public has an opportunity to comment. So, and those comments are received by you in an official environment where the meeting is being recorded. Those comments that are submitted, you need to consider them and have a response. So if somebody brings up something legitimate, you know, a concern, you either decide that, well, we heard your concern, we've decided we're still going to move forward with this ordinance as presented, or no, that was a great comment, we totally agree, we think we should make an amendment, so staff, make those changes and bring it back to us at the next meeting. So that's where, you know, this ordinance would go back and come back to you revised at the next meeting, and we'd have another public hearing. And then when you finally, when the public's good with it and you're good with it, then you say, we recommend approval, the ordinance is presented, and it gets moved on to council, and council does the same. And then once council's done with it, then we send, with, I forget if it's three or five days after council approves it, then it becomes official.
Five days.
It varies.
Oh, it depends on the thing.
Depending on where you're at. So five days. And then within 10, we have to send, of it being official, we have to send a copy to Department of Commerce so they know what the final product was. And then it becomes official, it gets codified, you know, incorporated.
Then a year down the road, something gets built.
Well, never.
Maybe.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily happen fast, but it happens in an open environment.
Always amended again.
Something else will get built. Yes. I did have one other question too.
Yeah.
There were some, a few spots where it was highlighted, or a few highlighted spots, and then.
Yeah.
Some spots where there was missing some chapter numbers or something like that. What's that for?
Those are reminders to me to fill in the blanks. Some of that information wasn't available at the time that this was prepared.
I got you.
It's minor enough that I knew the Department of Commerce wouldn't care, but we would have that information after we heard from you, but before it goes to council. So those blanks will get filled in here next week before it goes on. So just some cross-reference information. And the other one was, what was the date of Department of Commerce's granting of our expedite, request for expedited review, which of course hadn't happened yet, but crossed my fingers, and I did it on Monday, so.
And this is only once a year we can do amendments?
Once a year.
The cabinet's plan?
You can, you can actually do, council can direct you to do amendments at any time. We receive amendments from the public, so if, say, you as a landowner, you really don't like, you don't think we should have a 20-foot front yard setback, we should have an 18. So you can propose an amendment to the code to change the front yard setback, and then Planning Commission would have to hear that amendment. You know, I would prepare a staff report and a draft ordinance, and here's what's being proposed by, you know, applicant. So all those, we receive once a year, so. And then they're presented to you as a package rather than piecemeal throughout the year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's really just a way of making sure we stay organized.
Yeah.
So city council can, can direct staff to bring an ordinance, the draft ordinance, to you at any time. What else you got?
I know. Now that you know where it's all coming from, now, now you can read it and how it makes sense. Like, well, wait a minute.
Have to read it again.
How about the Public Participation Plan? Does that, any questions there? Does that make sense to you that we have a plan for how we're going to involve and involve the public?
Which, where is that?
That's towards the end. It's this here.
Oh, the last one.
Yeah, but it's actually an exhibit to the ordinance.
Damn. This thing.
There you go.
Yep.
Oh, you printed it separately.
Right.
they recommended by state, by state agency, by Commerce or something, that this is what we would expect your Public Participation Plan to include?
Yes, there is a requirement to have a plan. It can be as simple as really what we have in our code already. City attorney wanted quite a bit more detail, and she had a template for one that we customized to us, which she's received approval of in other jurisdictions. And I've reviewed it too, and it looks like it's well-done.
Is there anything that stands out to you that's different from what you've seen in other public participation plans? Anything unusual or?
No, it's fairly typical for a modern public participation plan. I just wanted to make sure that there was an inclusion for utilization of the website, because that's the easiest and most cost-effective way to get information out to folks, you know, having a PDF up on the site for the meeting, attached to the meeting day makes it easy for everyone to print out. And then, you know, you can use colored documents and drawings as well too, and it's, I try not to print paper if I can, even PDFs are so handy anymore.
Yeah.
But we'll keep doing paper for you, Scott.
I was going to say, but we have a lot, we have a large number of older retired people who really don't do a lot of computer stuff, and so.
Like me.
Well, I mean, it's just normal, I mean.
I don't have a computer.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a really young community base, then pretty much everybody would be hooked up. But, but just, you know, because we have so many older retired people, we still have quite a few that don't have computer access or internet access.
Yeah, sure.
So.
Well, and that's where it makes it handy to have a printed copy here at City Hall, but for communication, particularly between Jill and I, is that I can put stuff up on the web, and then she can print it and distribute it, or email it out, or print it and have it ready for you.
I just come down there and get it.
Yeah. That's great.
I did have one other thing, is when I read this the first time, in the, on page 11, in the section where it talks about the criteria that governs the Planning Commission's assessment, some of those items in there seemed kind of general, kind of vague to me. And I wasn't sure how in-depth we needed to go with this, like, for example, number five, whether changes in countywide attitudes necessitate amendments to the goals of the plan and the basic values embodied within the comprehensive plan. I mean, I wouldn't necessarily know what the countywide attitudes are. Would something like that require some kind of a, like a survey to go around or?
No, actually, what this is talking about is the county also has a comprehensive plan, and there's something called countywide planning policies as part of a requirement for the county to facilitate. This is above and beyond what the city's responsibility is, but as a county, they have to do this intermediate step that they, if there are concerns that apply to the entire county, like maybe major transportation networks or water facilities or sewer facilities, so they have something that, at the county level, and usually there's a representative from every city that attends a group, the Growth Management Coordinating Committee is the name of it in Pierce County. The Growth Management Coordinating Committee is the name of it in Pierce County, I'm, I'm Ruston's representative to that group. But every, I think it's every four years, they, they come up with a, a new list of countywide planning policies. So there's this list of, of things that they feel are important. Countywide, it doesn't matter that individual cities may or may not like it, as a county, this is what they're doing. And they'll send us the, the list of items, we, we have to adopt and acknowledge these things in our Conference of Plan. One in, in Ruston, to give you an example, Pierce County created a flood district to, to handle issues with the Puyallup River. City of Ruston is nowhere near the, well, they're more near the Puyallup River, but the Puyallup River flooding would never affect us 'cause we're on commencement bay, not on the shores of, of Puyallup River. Regardless, county thought it was a good idea to create this, this group, this governing body to handle issues with storm, uh, flooding. And they have taxing authorities, so they tax countywide. So there's a, you know, you pay a certain amount per thousand of value on, on your home, if you live in Pierce County, even if you're not on the shores, 'cause they say, well, if I five was flooded and that affects commerce and transportation in the county and you may not be on the shores of Puyallup River, but that's certainly gonna affect you as a resident in our county, so cities that are not necessarily on the shores are still impacted by it, so county requires that our Conference of Plan be updated to acknowledge that that's important to us as a city. And so, some of those things kind of get pressed upon you as, as a jurisdiction, other things make sense. You know, most of them make, make, make sense, that it's a, it's a countywide issue.
Sort of like how it is with the state for transportation, how it might not affect us here, but we're all, we might have an up or a increase in our, our licensing fee for different things that they're going to be doing.
Sure.
That might not affect us right here locally, but it might be affect Spokane or Seattle or, because I'm somewhere up there, but it's good, good overall for the state.
Yeah.
Is what they believe.
Well, and we have items in our Conference of Plan that are just like nine basic requirements that come from the state. Under the Growth Management Act, your Conference of Plan shall include this, you know, this list. And so, the county has a similar authority.
Wow. Let's guess the, the city was just about this large.
Everybody gets a piece of the pie.
Right.
Well, don't feel overwhelmed by it, and that's what I'm here to do for us, to explain it to you, and you know, it makes sense, so you're not getting off track.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get it, I've been doing it for a long time. But the word attitudes is kind of an interesting, that, that makes you think, well, how would I know what the attitudes are? Well, the attitudes are reflected in the Conference of Plan.
What's your attitude?
Yeah. I got an attitude for you.
Yeah, luckily, our, our city attorney had, had a, another template for this, this ordinance that we use, so I didn't challenge her on a lot of the text unless there was reason to.
You're someone smarter than me wrote this.
Yeah.
I think Carol's smarter than a lot of us. At least when it comes to writing ordinances, right?
Yeah. Any other questions?
I'll need to read it again.
Good.
Well, if you're happy with the, the work-study session part of this, if you've got your questions answered, then you could, you could move on to the public hearing now if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Need somebody to make a motion for the opening of a public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Yes.
And we have a second, so we are open now for a public hearing. It is now time for the scheduled public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Amendment Procedure Code Update Ordinance 2014-19. Is, and we already did the, the motion on it, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, or all in favor of opening it up, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passed, three to zero. I'll say, so now we'll be taking, taking testimony on the public hearing. We'll now start taking public testimony and comments. We'll go row by row, all two of you, okay? Beginning with the front row. When is your turn? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and residential address for the record, and offer your comments on the issue before the Planning Commission. Each member of the public will be limited to five minutes for their comment. This is not a general public comment period, okay? Therefore, comments must be relevant to the issue that is now before the Planning Commission, and the chair may end the comment period for any person who does not comply with the rules. If any person offering comments would like to offer written evidence as well, you may do so during the comment time. Please explain the nature of the written testimony you wish to offer and briefly explain why it is relevant. You may then hand the document to the planner to be identified and labeled as part of this actual process that we're doing. So, start with the front row. Come on up.
Steven Floyd, Town Car Newspaper, 531 South Military, wrote the record. I've got a few questions, just to make sure I'm clear on the document before the commission today. I'm just wanting to understand if, if, let's say I'm a property owner and I have some property in a residential zone, and I would like it rezoned to mixed use, this would be the, this outlines a process I would follow for that?
No.
No. Okay, so that would be separate.
Right.
So what would be the mechanism for a property owner in that situation? Would that be something established by the, the commission at a later time, or is that already in place?
I believe there is one currently in place, right?
Yeah, Development Code's already in place.
Okay. So this is specific to the Comprehensive Plan, not anything necessarily to do with those types of zoning issues?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. And, let's see. It describes in the title of the ordinance how this repeals basically anything that came before touching on this topic. And I'm just curious, how significantly does this differ from the process that was in place previously, if at all?
If we can go ahead and have that.
Yeah, it just provides additional detail, it's not in conflict with, it's just, like I explained, the Planning Commission allows putting notices on the web and describes how soon we need to provide notice to the newspaper and all the various elements of the procedure update. But yeah, there's no conflict.
Okay, so this could be...
Can I interrupt just for a second? I'm just, sorry, this, I know this isn't appropriate, but probably in general, but generally, isn't the public comment section is just comments, not question?
No.
Question and answer is another time?
That's true.
This is, this is your opinion about that, not question and answer? We can do question and answer after? Or when the public hearing's closed, if you wanna ask, you can see if they wanna hear questions at that time, or?
So just under other business, or?
If you have questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, either under other business or after.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'm sorry, this is, it's just, you know...
It's been brought up before.
Nobody, good questions.
You just thought you could sneak in there under the wire and get all your questions answered. Be happy to clarify them, but after.
Okay.
No? Nothing? Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, let's see. Uh, let's see, so rebuttal time, there's not an application, so. Closure of the records. Make a motion, we close the public record, is there a second to this motion?
Second, add a motion.
Second, add a motion?
Add a motion.
Add a motion, okay.
I gotta enunciate.
That's okay. It has been moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, since there's no further discussion, let's vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Passes three to zero. Uh, the hearing is now closed, the time is now four fifty, four fifty-two PM. This portion of the meeting is open to the public, and since this is a legislative matter, further public comment can be made at any time prior to the City Council taking final action. So right now, we're gonna do deliberation, we will now begin deliberation, the floor is open for discussion. This is when he can come up, yeah.
Just as a procedural note, if, if you had received questions during the public hearing, and maybe you kept notes of those questions, this is the point where you could say, well, staff, some questions were brought up during the public hearing and we'd like some answers to them, and I could come up and, and explain the answers at that point.
Okay.
Sometimes it seems silly to be so procedural, but it's important that the public hearing be contained and recorded and be, you know, that's, that's why we have this process.
Right.
Can I get a copy of, I'm the only one without a copy, could I have a copy?
Are they right there?
Oh, yeah, right there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And thank you.
Sure.
I'm learning.
So if you had any questions, you can ask them now, otherwise, if you, after hearing the public hearing comments and testimony given, if, if you think you need to make a change to the ordinance, you would do that now, or if you're fine with it still as presented, then you would move, move on, deliberate, ask questions, and then you'd make your final vote on the ordinance or direct staff to make amendments and come back to you.
I'm fine with the way it's set up. It's just, like, like you said earlier, it's just being a little bit more, I don't wanna use the formality, but it's a little bit more in-depth on...
Specific.
Specific, there's the word I was looking for, a little bit more specific, specific on how we're gonna notify everybody of our meetings and what we're going to be doing, which, that helps with the Open, Open Government Act, and we wanna make sure that everybody knows what's happening, so it's, the transparency is there, so, yeah. I like that. Okay, and then I'll ask the question, is there a motion to recommend to the City Council approval of the draft ordinance as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance draft as, as presented.
Okay. That's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Since there is not, no further discussion, let us vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. It was three to zero in favor, okay. Onto the next is other business. Onto other business, is there any other business for the Planning Commission to consider?
Not tonight, other than just to give you a kind of a heads-up on what's kind of on our calendar, the next two ordinances that'll be coming before you. One on regulations pertaining to marijuana, and then also Wireless Communications Facilities ordinance, so that we state, you know, which zone and how tall and where within the city wireless telecommunications facilities could occur.
Oh, okay.
So both those things are on my to-do list to get to you guys, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so expect to hear from me on that.
Okay.
We don't have specific dates yet, but those are, those are next. We needed to get this done first, the way of process for how to make changes to the land use code.
Makes sense.
Learn a little bit every day.
All right.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sleep with this one.
Don't give it that much attention.
Okay, any other business, any other business anybody would like to add?
No, just wanted to thank you folks for being here tonight, I appreciate you guys, your, your volunteer efforts and being patient with me as I get you up to speed on all this. I'm, I'm happy to explain any, and if you have questions ahead of time, you can give me a call or send me an email, see if, and I'm happy to explain one-on-one. We just can't have all three of you at the same time unless it's here.
Right.
With a quorum, so.
Okay. Thank you for being patient with us.
Yes, really.
Thank you.
And you guys, too, thank you, because this is new to us all the way around, so.
Is it all new, by the way, is this, have you always been the Planning Commission? Oh, this is all new? So I'm...
We're brand new.
Brand new.
This is brand new.
Yes, this is really brand new for a while.
This is our second meeting.
This is our second meeting.
What are you reading here?
And they're doing great.
So I have, I have one last question, as far as the recommendation to council. I understand that they, they approved recommending it to council, so who actually writes the recommendation?
That would come from me or Carol.
So they don't have to do anything like that?
No, no, there's nothing for them to do.
So the only thing we have, do have left to do is I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I need a second, a motion and a second, fantastic. It has been moved and seconded, we adjourn, adjourn the move, the meeting. Any discussion? Since I hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Hearing none. Meeting is now closed, time is now five PM.